Good afternoon and welcome to our County Board of Commissioners work session this September 26, 2023. Today, we have two presentations before us. The first one is to have recommended amendments to our Cobb County Code. And our presentation to follow will be to provide an update to our local emergency operations plan. We'll go ahead and get started with community development first, and they will be kicking off the presentation for our amendments to our county code. And with us, we have Jessica Kukwin, who is the Director of our Community Development Department. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners. It's great to see you all today. And yes, we are here with our 2023 code amendment package. This package is actually a little bit lighter than some of the ones that we've had in the past. So what we'll do today is we'll do the full presentation for you. You'll hear from the department heads and staff members that have actually prepared each section of the code amendments, so you'll have the subject matter expert on each item presenting. If it's agreeable to the Chair and the Board, I think it would be helpful if, as we get through each chapter, perhaps at that point, we pause to ask questions, so that way you've got the appropriate staff member up here. And then we'll close it all out and talk about next steps. So the first section or first chapter that we have up for amendment is Chapter 10 Animals, and Steve Hammond with Animal Control will present that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, distinguished commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So Cobb County Animal Services would like to amend our code. We want to bring the code up into compliance with state law. So in 2012, the state legislature passed the Responsible Dog Owner Act in Title IV to protect the general public and their pets from injuries and death caused by dog attacks. Our ordinance was not updated at that time. The updates to the ordinance will refine the definitions of dangerous vicious dogs. It identified the requirements to own a dangerous or vicious dog. Clarified notification and hearing procedures outlines the responsibilities of the owners, and local counties must adopt the RDOA or Responsible Dog Owner Act at a minimum, which we would be doing in this amendment. So our ask is to amend the Cobb County ordinance to conform with state statute. We've changed the name to Cobb County Animal Services. In 2017, we changed the name away from Cobb Animal Control to more accurately reflect what we do, and then a minor cleanup of some outdated references, definitions, and verbiage in the ordinance itself.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Steve, I don't know if this just was an oversight, but on Article 1, 10-1, I guess it's on page four, it's where the fourth line down costs means confiscation costs paid by the owner to Cobb County Animal Control. Shouldn't it say Cobb County Animal Services?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay. I guess we should change that.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's anywhere else, because I hadn't gotten through that, but go ahead.
Commissioner Burl, it is several places throughout, and I met with Jessica, and they're going to be making that change throughout the document.
Because some places, it does say services.
Let me address that real quickly. Commissioner, which version? Are you working with the copy that I gave you when you and I met?
Or? I'm working on the ones you sent.
Okay. So the ones from when we met, that was prior to the county attorney's review of the document. So what's been advertised publicly and posted and what's in the packet is the county attorney reviewed final version. So you should have that as well. And the animal control has been replaced throughout that document with CCAS or Cobb County Animal Services.
So the code amendments in our books are correct?
Correct.
And online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry, I was going by the old ones.
That's okay. No worry.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Steve? I had one question, and I'm trying to find here. Yes, there was a section crossed out that refers to potentially dangerous dog, and then there's some other references to what a dangerous dog is. So are we no longer classifying what a potentially dangerous dog is?
No, we, so the state law does not define a potentially dangerous, so we've taken that piece out. That was all part of the old ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
And it was very confusing to our staff and to the public as well.
Okay.
But they still go through the Animal Services Board?
Yes, ma'am.
For a hearing?
Yes, ma'am. So once we classify a dog as dangerous, there's a certain time period that they have the opportunity to appeal. If they do file an appeal, then we schedule them a hearing with our Animal Control Board or Animal Services Board to hear that appeal, and then their decision is final.
Bless you. Yeah, I have firsthand experience with this. Unfortunate.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding this code section? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, the next chapter that we'll be discussing this afternoon is Chapter 50. Chapter 50 actually has two parts up for amendment. The first is the Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance. That will be presented by Frank Gibson, our Division Manager for Erosion and Sediment Control and Community Development. And then the second portion will be the Noise Ordinance. So we'll take those in two separate parts.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Frank. Good to see you.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this section of the code, Section 50. That deals with the environment. The first part, Article 3.
Frank, if you can help us in just leaning in closer to the mic?
Excuse me?
Or pull up the mic closer to you. We're having difficulty hearing you.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay. Article 3, Land Disturbance Permit Activities. Basically, we're just going in and updating all the definitions to include the applicable parties, correct terms, and the details that be added to each one of these issues, Best Management Practices, buffers, Coastal Marshlands, Departments, Design Professionals, Development, Land Development, and Quality Control Act, and then also the Agricultural Operations. The next part, discussion with the land disturbance activity, is regulations protecting the streams and preventing pollution during land disturbance activities. The Land Disturbance Activity Permit Application requires Erosion and Sediment Pollution Control Plan. Permitting fees, fees shall not exceed $80 per disturbed acre, and of course, that $40 per disturbed acre goes to Cobb County. $40 per disturbed acre goes to EPD for land disturbance activities. And then also permit violations. A permit must, may be canceled if two or more violations occur within a three-year period. And that's, that's new to our ordinance. And then the last section mentions permit bonds. Cobb County may set a bond on proposed land disturbance activities. Local authorities, responsibilities to set the plan for local issue authorities to protect the erosion control ordinance. Of course, we also still have to do the semi-annual reviews. That includes the Cobb Saltwater Conservation District, Cobb Saltwater Conservation Commission could include the EPD or both to come out and inspect any Cobb County cases that may go on. And then the last thing we have is the plan approval. Cobb County shall approve or disapprove revised plans within 45 days. And that's the overlook of the whole code amendments.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions for Frank? An inquiry, since we're looking at the code section. These silk fences that get erected in land disturbance projects, is there a policy or practice on when they should be removed? Oftentimes, I just see them remaining on these sites, I mean, just falling down, falling over, even after a project has been completed.
The law does not say that they have to be removed, although we always request that they're removed once a project is completed. On most cases, it may be an issue where they don't have 100% vegetation growing, and so the homeowner would normally request that they stay in until they get the 100% vegetation. And so sometimes, they end up staying in a little bit longer than need be, but we do kind of forcefully ask the developers and builders to remove them.
Okay, good. So I know who to contact, then, if I still see those silk fences up years, years after the development.
It is a responsibility of the developer or builder to remove those, and sometime they, they tend to move on without doing so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, I don't think anyone else has any questions or additional questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, next this afternoon, we'll have Lieutenant Pettit with Cobb County Police to present the amendments to the Noise Ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners. Thank you for this time. What we're coming to propose on the change in the Noise Ordinance is to remove the subjectiveness of the officers of using, writing the tickets for it, of just using their hearing, the way the code used to be would be whenever the officer was called out, and he would hear the noise from a certain distance, then that would give him the possibility to be able to write a citation. Moving to sound level meters is what we're proposing, and these sound level meters will be able to give us an exact reading of the decibel reading of the sound. And then we could propose for during the daytime that there would not be any sound above 70 dBAs, and then at night, from 11 o'clock to 7:00 in the morning, 65 decibels. At that point in time, it'll just give us something, talking with the court system. It's kind of like where someone would write a ticket, and you'd be over a certain mile per hour. It's a lot easier for them to prosecute those things instead of just saying, "An officer went out there, and he just heard a noise." My hearing might be different than another officer's hearing, and it just takes a lot of the subjectiveness to it. And it also puts us on par with a lot of the other counties around us in the metro area, and a lot of the cities with their own county have already changed to this type of ordinance of reading with the sound level meters. And we would just be able to get those to the precincts, and then the precincts would be able to use those whenever we get called out. And what they'll do is they'll end up being measured from the complainant's address or wherever they're complaining from, to make sure that whatever the reading is, is above the limit, and at that time, we'll be able to issue a citation. And then we've also proposed to change the, under the ordinance, most everything stayed the same. We did add in there about construction and repair of buildings. We did add in Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Before, we did not have any building or repair on Sundays, from talking with some of the public and just finding out. A lot of people, that's the only time they have time to do stuff, projects and stuff on their homes, and it just gives them some more time on Sundays to get some of that stuff done.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for presenting this code section. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, just thank you. This has been a labor of love for a couple of years now, and I know it was a carryover till we could get it right, and I think this, this will work. And, and I agree with you with the, the meters. It'll give us a, you know, a bar to actually measure, to record, and give us more teeth to enforce.
Yes, ma'am. And also, on the side of the complainant, of complaining, you can now show them a reading, "Hey, this is what our ordinance is. I know you may be able to hear this little pitty noise or whatever you think, but it does not reach this threshold." And so it also gives us, instead of having to sit there and argue with someone, we can say, "Hey, this is what our ordinance is. This is what the noise is. We took the reading, and this is what it is." And it gives them a little bit more understanding, because they may hear something we don't hear at other times, and so it just gives a little bit more, you know, concrete stuff to write the citations we need to. But thank you.
Can these also be used with the Animal Services for barking dogs?
That's something you'll have to talk with Director Hammond about. So I, I know with that, it's more the continuous barking that most people, it's not so much the threshold of the sound.
I have one.
It's the continuousness of it, and at the time of day or night.
15 minutes consecutive.
Yes.
I have experience with that one, too.
We, that is a possibility. It is not something that we've explored in the past using that for animals. The 15-minute threshold is generally there, as well as the caveat that if it interferes with the person's enjoyment of their property, which is a little bit harder or more subjective to, to prosecute.
Okay.
But it, it would, it would be, it would be a possibility that we could look at.
Thanks. I'm just going to tag on to that question. But does a dog's bark meet the 70 or 65 dBAs?
It probably would exceed that.
Really?
And so, again, it's going to depend on the, the way the sound works, it's going to depend on the distance. So if you're in your home in your living room, and, and the standard is to measure from where the complaint is, and the dog is three houses away, then it probably wouldn't. But it would be an annoyance at that point that is interfering with your, with your property, or your enjoyment of your property, where if you're standing at the fence and the dog is right across the fence barking, it would probably exceed that, depending on the size and type of dog.
Steve, a complaint that we've had periodically pertains to mufflers, and with the provision that an officer needs to get that read, how does that?
Lieutenant Pettit back for that.
Yes.
With the county ordinance, we will be able to do it with it being on private property. There's already state law for it on the roadway, which is going to be in the code section. We, we referenced it down there. Let me see. It is. Yeah, here it is. The exhaust noise, there's already, it's 40-8-71C through the OCGA.
What section are you reading from?
Oh, these are, because I figured you would ask this question, so I already had it on my notes.
You are prepared.
Because I, I knew this was probably coming. So 40-8-71C handles loud exhaust on the roadway. Now, we would in turn be able, if someone is in their driveway, and they're continuously revving their motor, or have a loud vehicle, then we would be able to, under the, the decibel reading to the sound meters, we'll be able to write them for that on private property. But for state law on the roadway, that's the code section that it would go under.
And are our local police able to address the state code on the roadways?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's, I, I will tell you, it's very hard to prosecute, because state law doesn't have a decibel meter reading for it, and at a point in time, you'd have to have every officer with a sound level meter, and a lot of times, you know, you would have to get them while they're driving by. So i- it's very hard, I will tell you, because I knew this was a big problem. I did look into other options for it.
Okay.
Knoxville, Tennessee, has implemented, there are companies out there that you can buy, or like a box, it's like kind of our flock cameras would be, but they would read the tag, and it would also have a sound meter in it, but it's about $10,000 per unit. So I've looked into it with this, and it is very costly.
Yes, and then if the state law doesn't have a decibel reading requirement or level in its code, to what standard would we enforce?
It's subjective. It just, it's very, it just says that, talks about how to be in working order, that it can't have cutouts, which may get louder, and it has to be to manufacturer specs and things like that, well, without an officer crawling underneath a car to find out if there's cutouts, to see what kind of muffler. And on a traffic stop, they're not revving their motor. All you have, now on some cars, they're loud enough, when you have them pulled over, through our body cams, you can hear it, and it is easier to write that citation now that we have body cams and the better cameras in the vehicles, but prior to that, it was very hard.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairwoman, as, as to section and the, the pieces that you're looking on, page 38, under the Noise Ordinance, it has the state references, where we talk about boat mufflers and also motor vehicle mufflers, and also the reference to fireworks, which are all covered under state code.
Yes, I see the state, I see the state code for other matters, but not for mufflers. I see it for horns, fireworks, unless I'm missing something.
And motor vehicle mufflers?
Can you send us that, the state code?
Oh, okay. I see. I'm looking at the underlying portion and not actually for motor, motor vehicle mufflers. Thank you, Bill. I see it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's in the, it's in the current version.
Is it covered under the Noise Ordinance, too?
To the extent that we're allowed to, that it actually pushes back to the state code, so.
But we have, our officers have to go out and enforce it from the state code. I still don't see it in our code. Don't see it in our code.
No, we have to reference the state code. Alrighty, who's up next, Jessica?
78.
All right, it looks like I'm up next. We're moving right along through this. That's great. All right, so next we have Chapter 78. There's two parts to this. The first one is Article 3, Division 9, which pertains to precious metals dealers. What's being proposed is to add consideration for online sales of watches, which is not currently contemplated in our current code. As you know, over the years, there is new ways of doing businesses and new ways of selling items, so this was a code amendment that I believe was sponsored, proposed by Commissioner Burl. So what we'd do here is to add a definition for watch. As the code is currently written in the proposed amendment, it speaks specifically to a timepiece worn typically on a strap on one's wrist. Commissioner Gambler, you and I discussed that and talked about adding a provision for pocket watches, and I appreciate your thoughts there, so we'll look at adding that to the final draft as we move this forward. It also has a couple of exemptions from the current precious metals dealer code that would be specific to only online purchases and sales of watches, so they would be exempt from the requirement for in-person photographing of the seller, because these are online sales. So to do an in-person photograph of someone selling something online would be a little more challenging. And also, on a similar vein, eliminating the requirement for fingerprinting of the seller, and this would only be for online sales of watches. And then also, 78, 395.1 would add a holding period specific to the online purchases and sales of watches. I'm glad to answer any questions on that one.
Are there any other accessories or items that we would see come up in the future with similar exemptions? It seems so specific.
Yes, it definitely is very specific. You know, this, this is an amendment that we were asked to bring forward specific to Certainly, there may be down the road, as we continue to look at new businesses that come into county and do, conduct transactions differently, that there may be some additional need to take another look at this.
Yes, because I'm thinking, online businesses have grown so much.
Yeah.
Do we have other code that specifically addresses online sales?
Yeah.
And I think if you could explain the reason for precious metals being treated like this, because of precious metals like jewelry, diamonds, things like that, being stolen and then taken to pawn shops?
Okay.
This is online sales, so it never reaches, it just goes direct from, you know, to the consumer. It doesn't go through a retail store, or a pawn shop, or what have you, so. And I know we did work with the police on this, because they're the ones that have to deal with this, and it's my understanding they were okay with this.
I've heard no objection to it.
Pardon?
I've heard no objection to it.
Okay.
So that's, thank you for that background. Any other questions for Jessica? Okay, we can go to the next section.
Great. The next section is Article 3, Division 11. This is short-term rentals. As you'll recall, we adopted last fall, the Board adopted the short-term rental section, and Commissioner Burl has also asked and served as a sponsor for some changes to this. Mostly, it sort of clarifies what's already in the code. But the first one is to specify and to really clarify in there that there should be no more than one short-term rental certificate per, per short-term rental property. So for instance, if, if you have a home, and you have a short-term rental certificate for your home, you couldn't have a separate short-term rental certificate for another bedroom in your home, and another one for the RV outback or what have you. So one certificate per property, so just clarifying that. There is a provision in the code that speaks to restrictive covenants. What's written in the code that has, or the draft that has come back from the county attorney's office, is to require that if there are any applicable restrictive covenants, that those would be submitted along with the application. You know, for instance, some HOAs may have a restriction on rentals, be it short-term or long-term rentals, within their covenants, that if that's the case, that those would be submitted, if there are any covenants that apply, that those would be submitted along with the application. However, the code also clarifies that this is only for notice purposes, and that the county is not, does not enforce private restrictions on a property. So that's been our practice, could really lead us down a sticky trail if we got in the business of enforcing neighborhood covenants, so there is that clarification in here. And then also, it goes on to clarify the occupancy and parking per Section 134.1. Whenever we put this forward initially, under the standard conditions, it says in H, number 3, "The occupancy and parking for single-family dwelling units shall be in accordance with Section 134-1." 134-1 is the definition, it includes the definition of single-family residence, which goes on to spell out no more than two unrelated adults, and also the limitations on parking. So previously, we incorporated it by reference with the idea being that if there were ever changes to that, we wouldn't have to hope that we remember to go back and change the short-term rental ordinance as well. But what has been proposed here is to clarify that, and to add the language, that there shall be no more than two unrelated adults residing within the short-time rental property at any point, and also that no more than four vehicles shall be permitted to be parked outside of the short-term rental property. So those are the changes that are proposed to the short-term rental code, and I'm glad to answer any questions on those.
Commissioners, do you have, yes, Commissioner Burl?
And I'm going to ask one more time from Legal, Brian and Debbie and Bill. Okay, we have had an instance where there are restrictive covenants, a HOA that says no rental, the certificate for short-term rental, and it was granted, because I've been told from Legal, we can't enforce HOA covenants, and I understand that. We can't. But if we allow, if we knowingly issue a certificate for a short-term rental in a subdivision that has HOA covenants that specifically say no rentals, period, then we're not enforcing the covenants, but we're denying, if we deny the certificate and say they can't have it based on that, is that's considered enforcing their covenants? Because to me, if we issue a certificate? Because to me, if we issue a certificate and they have it in their covenant, and the HOA has to enforce that, then they can say, well, the county issued me a certificate, so why am I not legal to do this?
Debbie Blair with the county attorney's office, good afternoon. Yes, Commissioner Burl, unfortunately, it is enforcing the private covenants, because if a property in Cobb County meets the standards and the requirements of our code, and they could be issued a short-term rental certificate, that's our county code, and that's what we enforce. When you add in a separate layer of a private contract, which is what covenants are, when you agree to purchase a home in a planned unit development with covenants, you are entering into a private contract with the HOA, those other homeowners, to do and not do different things. So if we are relying solely on those covenants, we are enforcing those covenants.
So can we require them on their application to notify their HOA if they have a HOA covenant?
We're.
There's already notification requirements for them to notify the property owners, so that's how that notification would come, is by what's already in the code, and also in the applicability section of the code that was adopted last year, it does specify that the allowance of short-term rental properties pursuant to this section shall not prevent private enforcement of additional restrictions that may be contained in restrictive covenants or other private contractual agreements or arrangements, so that covers, well, the county gave me a certificate, yes, we gave you one because you meet our requirements, but that doesn't mean that your HOA can't tell you can't do it.
Okay. So there's notice then on the application, but I have a question.
Yes.
But just for clarification on the notice, you mentioned that notice is issued to the owner, but is it also issued to the HOA?
It says adjoining property owners, as shown on the most current tax records, shall be notified of the application in writing with proof of notification submitted at Business License Division. We could add to that, just for clarity, because I mean, if there's HOA property abutting it, then they would get notification, but we could also add to that any homeowners association or property owners association to the notification requirement to clarify that.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, because I'm just a little unclear on why have the applicant to submit the covenants if it's, we can't do anything with it.
'Cause I asked for that.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for your honesty.
Well, to put us on notice, but if we can't deny it based on that, I just, I just shouldn't have them notify their HOA, because HOA covenants can be more restrictive than county code, but not vice versa, so, you know, if they want to have no rentals in their covenant, they can do that, and they can be more restrictive than our dwelling code or short-term rental code.
Right.
I just think to have them submit a document that we can't really do anything with slows down the process, and whether it's approved or denied, it's just, I think it's just additional work that we can't really do anything with, but that's just my way.
Okay. But we can add that they have to notify their HOA board or whoever?
Yes, yes, we can, we can add that to the final draft for consideration.
Let's let Commissioner Richardson weigh in.
Thank you. I just say, I'm fine either way, as long as we're not obviously enforcing it. The only reason why I'll be okay with the submission is for records case in the future, if there's some type of discrimination thing where they change their code and are like, oh, see, we've always had this, there was some like timestamp submission that it existed that they could refer to, but it's not, it still wouldn't be our role to like say, hey, here's evidence, it would be theirs that they would have on record, but I'm okay either way, it's just, yeah, it is weird, because it's not something that we can enforce against, and I wouldn't, I definitely don't want us to creep into that role of enforcing covenants.
Gamble? Yes, go ahead.
Jessica or Debbie, covenants have to be filed with Superior Court?
Yes.
Secretary of State.
Superior, not Secretary.
The deed records.
The deed records, so any changes to covenants then would have to be refiled?
Correct, there should be an amendment filed.
Right, so again, the county shouldn't be the holder of those documents, it would be the Superior Court, but I guess my biggest issue with the county, again, while we're not enforcing covenants, knowing that a subdivision says no rentals, yet we issue a permit, we're essentially setting up the HOA to have a civil suit with that homeowner to enforce the covenants because of a short-term rental. So while the county is trying to sit here and say, oh, we're not responsible, we just issued this certificate, the county is in a sense setting the homeowners up for a legal battle that nobody's gonna win.
And possibly us being sued by the person who gets the certificate, trying to override their covenant.
Well, again, we're enforcing our code, so whether or not an HOA makes a decision to bring a suit against one of their residences for a violation of their declaration is, that's a decision of the HOA, it has nothing to do with the county, I mean, it's simply, you know, a certificate was issued because certain criteria was met, and that home could be a short-term rental if it didn't have that declaration on it.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Burl, hold on, how do we do it with backyard chickens?
How do we what?
How do we do, how do we issue permits with backyard chickens? Because what I'm, stick with me, stick with me here for a second though, however, because some HOAs have covenants that don't allow backyard chickens, so if someone makes an application for a backyard chicken, of course, the county is just gonna look at it square footage, but if the covenants say no, do we still issue them a permit for backyard chickens?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say yes.
Yeah.
So then, so then again, here, we're just throwing it back to be in a civil matter.
Correct.
So Commissioner Burl, just to maybe close the gap on this, because the suggestion to include a copy of the restrictive covenants was your recommendation, would rather than that, so that way, we're not having to collect those and hold those and all those, just having in here the addition to say that they have to notify the HOA or POA, would that accomplish your goal here?
Yeah, but what page are you on?
Okay, so this is on page six of the most recent version, so it's actually, it's two, and then under D and E. You see it?
Right.
Okay, so the new language says, in the double underline, it says, a copy of any applicable restrictive covenant for notice purposes only, the county does not enforce private restrictions on a property, and would, rather than that language that's been proposed, would instead incorporating into E with the adjoining property owners the notification to include in that any HOAs or POAs, so homeowner or property owners association that, you know, covers that property, would that notification in lieu of that, bring the copy of the covenants to us that we can't do anything with, would that suffice to address your concerns as far as the HOA notification?
Right, but how, what do they bring with their application to show that they've notified?
They do have to provide proof that they have submitted the notification to the resident, so they could also just include in that HOA and POA, or POA, whichever is applicable.
Yeah, and just make E, D.
Yes.
And take D out.
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that. Are you all?
I think that's more practical.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can put that forward, the amendments, any changes that happen from this point, you won't see at the first public hearing, because what's already advertised is what will have the public hearing on, but whenever I do the presentation, it'll be a brief presentation, but when we do the presentation of those amendments at the public hearing, I'll make note that that's one of the things that we propose to put forward in an amended draft for the second public hearing, and we can make that change then.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Commissioners, just acknowledging a challenge with one of the changes, but I think it certainly is reasonable from a policy perspective, I'm just concerned about it from a practical perspective, it's not permitting more than two unrelated adults, that a lot of times you'll see unrelated persons actually choose a short-term rental versus another option because there is more space typically in a short-term rental, but I also have expressed concerns about those that have short-term rentals being given more latitude than someone who owns a property, because oft, I won't say often, but there are on occasion persons that may be using a short-term rental less for leisure or travel purposes, and it could be something that they're using to help fill a gap when it comes to living, and they would have more flexibility in a short-term rental to have more adults than what we permit in a single-family space, so I understand the reason for it, I probably would be advocating for this if it wasn't in there, but I also know that from a practical perspective, that I can see there being multiple violations of this, based on how people may prefer short-term rentals, and I'm curious to know what's the enforceability of that.
That's a great point, Chairwoman, and just as with our single-family definition and our single-family residential code, there are challenges in enforcing the number of unrelated adults because we don't know who's in every house. This is an example of code, the short-term rental ordinance is one that really is very much reactively enforced versus proactively enforced, and as you'll recall, whenever we started the process of looking at short-term rental code, as we discussed at the time, most of the situations, most of the concerns we had with short-term rentals were noise, parking, litter, all things that we already have codes to address, but due to the transient nature of the short-term occupants, it was often hard to address those because they've moved on, so ultimately, what the short-term rental code really has done for the county is to give us, help us keep the owner, the property owner on the hook for, you know, the behavior of their, whoever's occupying their home, and also to ensure that there's a local agent that we can get in touch with, and also the neighbors can get in touch with, that we know there's somebody locally we can get ahold of to take care of problems right now. So as long as the people occupying the short-term rental are doing so in a good neighborly way, then really, there's no reason that we would ever know whether or not the individuals are unrelated. Commissioner Burl?
Did you have anything?
I saw Richardson's hand on.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, pull a straw. Okay, Richardson, go ahead.
Thank you. I think what we're talking about here gets to the heart of the difference between short-term rentals that we're seeing in neighborhoods versus short-term rentals that really relate to the tourism activity, and I think that we still have an opportunity as a county to look at something around short-term rental districts where there may be a little bit more latitude to meet the tourism aspect, that don't really fall within neighborhoods, and I just, I don't know, I think there's still opportunity as far as when we even began this conversation with this board, to look at that, so, to your point, but.
I would be supportive of a consideration like that, I talked to Jessica about that, even when it comes to affordability, that there may be some areas that are more conducive to that, where they're near HDR, high-density residential versus in some other single-family neighborhood districts, so that's something I could support if you're interested.
I was just gonna say, where you have no more than two unrelated adults, can we add or a family and one outsider, because that's what our dwelling code is.
If that's the.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I apologize.
Our dwelling code is no more than two unrelated or a family and one outsider, which we changed that for a family plus one, for nannies or caregivers or, you know, nursing care in home. But you know the problems we've had, and with some short-term rentals, not all, there's some we never hear about, because they're on an acre or more, and they're set back off the street, their neighbors aren't affected, and you know, when this first, when we first started working on this, I tried to get a one-acre minimum, and that didn't fly with the rest of the board, so, or in a platted subdivision with homes so close together, but a fear of adding more is like if a little league baseball team or soccer team comes here and rent a house out, and you got twenty screaming kids and parties or whatever adults, I know the kids don't count for.
Exactly.
Unrelated, but it would create a lot of noise in a subdivision close together, with the houses close together, so, I don't know.
And again, that's, I think, where we rely on our other ordinances, I mean, ultimately, this tells us who to contact when there's a problem, but we can rely on our other ordinances, like the noise ordinance that you're considering right now, as well as the litter ordinances and the parking ordinances that are already in place, this just tells us who to enforce those on, it gives us some leverage with the owners to hold them accountable, and the leverage being that if they are not being accountable and being responsible for their short-term tenants, and ensuring that their short-term tenants are acting as good neighbors while they're there, that ultimately, they would face fines and ultimately could lose their short-term rental certificate.
Any other questions or comments regarding this code section?
Just to add on the unrelated adults, obviously, we're gonna have to spend a little bit more time on that one, because even when, if we think of the scenario with the family that hires a nanny, that reduces it even further from two unrelated adults to a family and unrelated adult, which in this case would be the nanny, so this one is probably gonna be a little bit more challenging, because when people rent short-term rentals, whether it's a guy's trip, girl's trip, or family that's bringing their neighbor's kids, it certainly has the potential to be and will likely be more than two unrelated adults.
When we put this forward initially, the code as it stands adopted today specifies occupancy per one thirty-four point one, so that's exactly what's in, and we can, we can make sure, you know, I, honestly, I was a little bit hesitant, as Commissioner Burl knows, I was, I was hesitant, we'll say hesitant, to add the additional language, as I would rather like have it tied directly to one thirty-four point one, so that way it's word for word.
Sure.
Understanding that short-term rentals are used a little bit differently, but then also understanding that, you know, many of our short-term rentals are in a single-family neighborhood, so they should continue to function as a single-family home from the, so that's a policy.
Well, you just said something right there. Can we specify that in the code, that's still in accordance to our current practice, that if they have this in a single-family residential area, then it has to comply with that code section, so kind of getting to what Commissioner Richardson was sharing.
I mean, to that point, like, I think there may be a question with there being uniformity in enforcement on that, if we say like this, and so that's where, that's where I'm like, if we have, if we identify it as a district, then maybe that can create some legal coverage, I mean, I'm licking, I don't know, but.
Well, perhaps we specify that.
Not in a platted subdivision.
Short-term rentals in a, in a single-family zoning district shall comply with, you know, the definition of single-family residence, some one thirty-four dash one, because as it's stated right now, or as it could be, you could have a short-term rental in any of our districts, so it could be R-20, or it could be RM-12.
They're not limited to just the R districts, though.
Legally, can we specify that?
The R districts is where.
Like add not in.
Right, they're residential zoning districts.
Legally, I suspect that you probably could not do that, that you would be singling, you would be singling out, you have to remember the property rights.
Fair housing, yeah.
Property rights to the people who own the property, and you're excluding a particular group, it could be argued by an arbitrary nature of the size of the lot, saying they can't have short-term rentals, I don't think you'd be able to do that.
Okay.
So can we put the one-acre back in?
I think that would be, again, kind of bordering on what Bill was talking about for those that are utilizing this as a potential.
I thought he said we could do the size.
We can, I would, then I would be concerned about us limiting the income potential of those that may have a smaller property.
those that may have a smaller property that are utilizing short-term rentals. I think it would be, I think it would be discriminatory based on the, the income levels typically associated with persons that may have a one-acre lot or more, even though it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily one-for-one correlation, oftentimes, it is correlated that a larger lot is going to have a higher, it's, it's gonna be a higher-cost lot.
Well, we have two acres for chickens.
No, chickens are 5,000 square feet. To get around that...
And, and maybe that, but that's a good point, because if people do have a smaller lot, then they come and request a land use permit, which gives them that opportunity. So, that could be one way to still provide the opportunity, and, you know, locate it in a one-acre lot, and if they have a smaller lot, then they come before us for a land use permit, but that would still be onerous, and then, then you'd be exacting a cost, again, on somebody who might likely have a lower income.
I was gonna say, my, my concern about the one-acre requirement was that it would then encourage short-term rentals in areas where most of the land use is one acre, and that would not be preferential either, for those that may move out into those lots. But, but, I think, and, and this is where I was saying, like, legal guidance, because my thought on having it be specified against the zoning code is that that would be restrictive, but if we instead create a district that creates latitude, that's not really restrictive, and so that may be legally at, more advantageous, but I don't, I don't know, it's just...
I like the idea of a district.
Just seeing, but...
Some people may wanna go to an area for this that may not be in, was a tourism area. They may wanna be closer to a family member. I know, one person I know is a caregiver, and so they're helping someone with appointments, so their family came and set up in one that might not be in a tourist area.
Just anecdotally, I, I think we do have a number of short-term rentals that are in some more subdivision areas, and for instance, my own family, we had to have some repairs on our, our home, and had to vacate our home for a full week, and fortunately, we're able to find a single-family home as a short-term rental in Acworth, where we were able to live, as we typically do, take my son to school down the road, and it was a lot less disruption than trying to live out of a hotel for a week, so it's, it's interesting, I think that gave me...
But you're a family, and you're related, so you're not breaking any rules. Well, I just...
I made an anecdotal observation, again, I'm not telling you to change it, I just know there's some practical implications to this that could contradict what we're putting in our, our ordinance.
Commissioner Gamble, did I see your hand up?
No.
Okay.
Well, this, this was in the Airbnb code when we initiated it, but it just referred to the section for the single-family dwelling, and I asked that it be spelled out, because, because we have, before we did the certificates, we did have people that were, that didn't know, that they couldn't have, you know, rented out for this, for more than the dwelling code allows. So, I, I think they need to know what the process is and what the rules are before they, to know that they meet all the requirements, if they're gonna get a certificate. So... I was just trying to make it clear, um, why.
With our discussion, is there any desire to change what we have presented before us?
Not, other than adding the family and one outside.
Which is consistent with what is in 134.1?
Is there a reason why that wasn't spelled out with the two unrelated?
No, ma'am, we can incorporate that, if that's the direction the board wants to go, absolutely.
Just make the, the commission aware, too, when you, when you specifically emphasize certain portions of that code section, and although there's a reference to all of it, there could be an argument made that the other portions of it do not apply. And, and also, you need to consider, too, that when we change code sections, this would be one of those situations where we've had before, where you'd have to find it all throughout the code, whereas if we just changed at once, at some point in time, 134.1, whatever the new definition is, automatically transfers into the short-term rental code, because it's the new definition, so, just things for the board to consider.
And it does still reference Section 134-1. Maybe add compliance with Section 1, with the no more than two unrelated and family and one, and the cars, number of cars.
The, the way that the code is currently written says, occupancy and parking for single-family dwelling units shall be in accordance with Section 134-1, so that would then encompass the entirety of 134-1.
But they don't, the average person isn't gonna know what is in 134-1, and they're not gonna have a copy of it when they apply for a certificate.
Is there a way that it could be specified in the application? Similar to the other code we talked about?
They, they do get, you know, they are to have a, a copy of the codes, I mean, we could certainly also add the definition of, of the single-family ordinance, or the single-family residence, to application materials. Again, then that sort of makes it incumbent on us, if that ever changes in any way, that we have to go back and change all of our application materials and everything. That's where, my hope was that we would be able to just keep the reference to 134-1 in its entirety.
I think that makes sense, because we've talked about that multiple times, when we have code amendments about the, us not keeping all the sections updated at the same time, and that makes us have to come back for code amendment changes because of that.
We have a great example of that coming up in 134, so...
Yeah, Commissioner Richards?
I was saying, in light of the insight provided by our attorneys, I think it would be wiser to strike it, because we kind of put ourselves in the position where the other components may not be incorporated into that definition, if there were to be a civil case or something brought up.
Is there support from any other commissioner to remove that section? The two conditions that are clarified?
Well, that's how it is now.
Well, it's just having the reference to comply.
Yes, are, are you amenable to us just keeping that part and not adding the two new conditions, without specifying the two conditions as part of the change?
Are they gonna get a copy of 134-1 when they apply?
We can certainly provide that to them.
I mean, a one-page?
We can do that.
Code?
Commissioner, I mean, there, every person's supposed to presume to have knowledge of what the law is, particularly in a situation where they're applying, well, whether they don't...
They're not gonna go...
Whether they don't or not, if, if you issue a citation for it, I mean, ignorance of the, of the code section is, is not a defense to that.
Right, that's a good point.
All right, I do think it would be helpful, though, if we provided some information, even, I mean, yeah, we do updates, we do updates twice a year, maybe we just make sure that that application perspective has information relevant.
Can I, can I suggest, maybe, Jessica, instead of providing a copy of it, if you provide a link, like whatever document it was, so that there was a link, so they were able to see it online, which would be whatever the current code would be?
Yes, we can certainly do that, too.
Commissioner? Commissioner Gamble, go ahead, we haven't heard from you in a while.
But on the application, don't we calculate, based on the square footage, how many people they can have in the house?
Yes.
So, does that also then translate to parking? When, when, when we do all these calculations, does it also translate to parking?
Parking is also consistent with 134-1, yes, ma'am.
So, when they apply for their permit, do, on the permit, do we say, okay, you can do a short-term rental for six people and six cars? I mean, is, is that kind of known when they file for their permit to become 134?
I believe, I'm trying to find, because I think we actually had something so that we would include that information actually on the certificate itself.
Because if we include it on the certificate, then it's, it's known to them upfront what their restrictions are, as, as far as number of people, number of cars, and, and then essentially, couldn't we add information to the certificate that states, you know, if you exceed these limits, then you can be penalized?
So, the, as the code already reads at this point, within the unit, they have to include a copy of the short-term rental certificate, which includes, among other things, the maximum occupancy of the unit, as well as the maximum number of vehicles that may be parked at the unit, as well as provisions regulating noise, so we'll need to be sure that if we update the noise ordinance, that that's also updated, but...
But Jessica, I, I'm sorry, were you done, Commissioner? Before even getting to the point of the certificate being issued, in the application packet, do we have, like, a legend or some type of information relative to the size of the home, the number of vehicles, and the number of unrelated persons, as it ties back to 134?
That's all reviewed and, and approved by our staff, in looking at what, what the square footage is, the size of the house, on the tax records, versus just relying on what the applicant has filled out, so, so we do go and confirm all of that through the application process.
Okay, so it's just basically confirm or reiterate it through the certificate?
Correct.
Okay.
There seems to be a, a couple safeguards to address the points that you were considering adding, Commissioner. Does that help you feel better if we were to remove those?
Yeah, if it's on the application. It's just that one line that we'd be removing, because the other, Section 1, according to 134-1 is already in the code.
Yes, there would be two lines in 138-407E2H, then the number three and four, they have two new clauses that are double-underlined on the bottom of page 85 of 105 in our agenda book, or in page six of the section, if you're not referring to the agenda book. So, there would actually be two sentences removed, the one in H3?
Three and four.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Chairwoman, as, as you're proposing, if, if we were to remove the line about parking, then the language would still tie back to the parking limitations in 134-1, as well as 134-272, which speaks to, like, parked on a hardened, treated surface and what have you.
Yes, and all those other provisions. Don't park on the grass.
Right.
Well, but then it also removes the potential conflict between what's on the permit and what's in code.
Yeah, that's true.
But are you saying that on their application, it would, based on their square footage, it would say how many cars and...
It would, it would go on the short-term rental certificate, which they would be handed, and they would also be required to display in the unit itself, so that way the tenants, whoever's there, also knows that this is how many people you can have, and they also have to put in the advertising, so if they advertise, for instance, on Airbnb, or VRBO.com, any advertising is also required to have the maximum occupancy, as well as the number of vehicles.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we can make that change, then also for the next iteration of this code section. Are there any other questions, commissioners, with respect to Section 78-407, short-term rentals? Okay, we'll go to the next section.
Thank you for that discussion. The last chapter that we have is 134 zoning. We're gonna let our zoning division manager, John Peterson, come up and cover those for us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. It's unusual to be here on the fourth Tuesday of the month, but I'm glad to be here.
Glad to have you.
Okay, and the zoning amendments come in three different parts. The first one, right here, we're gonna add the definition of state-licensed esthetician to professional office, to professional offices, to allow that use to go into similar office-type settings. You know, typically, we, we see dermatologist in low-rise office, or in O&amp;I, and we get several requests a year for estheticians to go in near them, so they can be by the dermatologist. So, the staff's proposing to add state-licensed esthetician to the definition of professional office, just to make it easier for those uses to be together. Second thing we're proposing is more or less a cleanup, and this is one of the drivers of the UDC code. This is an instance where we changed the text, but it didn't, the changes didn't translate over to the chart. So, for instance, R12, that was put back into the code as a legitimate zoning district back in 2015, but in the chart, there's a little, there's a little symbol that still makes it prohibited. The same thing with RA4, it was permitted by the board in 2015, RA6 permitted by the board in 2013, and RM16 was put back in the code in 2012 by the board. So, that change has just removed a little symbol that prohibits it. And the last item for code amendments relates to EV charging stations for electric vehicles. And this amendment came about because we've had an incident in East Cobb and West Cobb at the avenues, where the owner wanted to put in these large charging banks, or charging stations, and we found that the, the large banks do cause problems with lighting, with signage, and with taking up required parking. So, the staff has proposed three different parts to this part of the code amendments. First one is for four or less charging stations, we're gonna regulate the setbacks, where they can go, we're gonna regulate the, the reader boards on the charging stations and the lighting, so they don't cause negative effects to adjacent or nearby properties. The second part of this code amendment is for charging stations where there's five or more on a non-residential property. For this one, we're gonna require the Board of Commissioners to approve this as a, an other business item, for a site plan amendment. And for these, things like required parking, lighting, and signage will be addressed at the time of the other business item. The third part is for residential property, we're exempting one charging station per property, so, so, so you can have one in your garage, or inside your house for charging your electric car. So, those are the three new changes for the code for EV charging stations. And at this point, if there's any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
I have one question that I shared with Jessica in 134-266, Section C2C, where it provides that the installation of five or more charging stations and their associated equipment on non-residentially-zoned property, not allowed on residentially-zoned property, and then going to sea, cannot be located adjacent to a residentially-zoned property. We have a number of gas stations that are immediately adjacent to residentially-zoned property, so I'm wondering why, if we have this code section, why there's not parity with the gas station ordinance? Why, why are we being more restrictive for electric charging stations that could be next to residentially-zoned property?
And, and thank you for the question, Madam Chair. You know, when we put together this code amendment, we tried to address the things that came up during the, the concerns by the citizens and other elected officials. If it turns out that we need to treat gas stations the same as this, or is this more like a gas station, then we can do that, but for the first time around, this is what the staff's proposing, because, you know, we did look at some, some areas where there's large charging banks, and it do seem very disruptive at night, because they're all lit up, and they do cast light everywhere.
Understood. I'm wondering if there, perhaps, as we try to tackle that issue, if there is a way that, again, isn't deemed more restrictive, and I'll give you an example, so, I've talked to some gas station owners who perceive that there may be some point in time that their gas stations transition to a charging station. So, if they are currently zoned next to a residential area today, they couldn't move towards that newer technology and be compliant with this code section, because they'd be adjacent to a residential area. That's my concern, is just, again, not just even that transition, but in some instances, it could make sense, but I hear the example you're talking about, and I understand the challenge there. But I hear the example you're talking about, and I understand the challenge there.
Just as a reminder, with our last code amendments, we addressed the light spillage that was coming off of gas station properties and onto residential properties, because we were having these canopies, gas station canopies, that were lit up like daytime and had a lot of, some light pollution onto the adjacent properties. So that's something that we addressed previously, that now limits, and they have to submit a lighting plan that shows us at the property lines what the lighting levels are. So we've already sort of addressed that to handle gas stations that are particularly close to residential properties. This would speak specifically to electric car chargers, but I would think down the road, as technology continues to change, I can envision that this section may also change, and that's, you know, the evolving nature of codes.
Yes, and maybe what you're referring to, those challenges in that zoning application, that's for new charging stations being installed?
Correct.
Where I'm talking about conflict even for existing gas stations and them having that transition. So that could be some way to condition how this could be adjacent to residential property that still could be supportive of the residents who are making the complaints for new applications. But then I also think there could be somebody who wants to start a gas station and could say, "You're not allowing me to do this because I have electric charging stations," but if, you know, if another gas station that had gas pumps were to come in and apply, they would be given that opportunity. I'm sorry, I still think there could be a challenge. Yes, I see two hands up, three hands up, and I don't know who's first, and you guys like to referee who goes first, second, and third. I will let you do that as long as we go one at a time.
So I do want to piggyback off of a comment there, and then also I have a question about the parking shortage component in here. But yeah, my concern, I understand the proximity issue with residential. I do want to know, like, exactly what came in as far as a complaint regarding electric charging, just to contextualize that. Because my concern is that there are areas in our community that are vastly residential, and there may be a gas station there. And so what we're saying is that there wouldn't be the availability of any electric charging stations nearby in the future. If, they would have to find a way to get somewhere closer to like where there's more, maybe more commercial activity, so I could see it being a problem in the future.
Near future.
Near future, yeah. And then the question that I have around the parking shortage is, I just want to make sure I understand what parking shortage analysis represents. Is that relatively arbitrary by staff, or is that more specific?
It comes out of our code, Commissioner Richardson, and, you know, when the UDC gets finalized, you know, I am expecting parking counts to go down at least 25%, maybe more than that in certain categories.
Yeah.
Because there has been a big trend lately for mixed use and shared parking, and that has not seemed to hurt anything. But I'm expecting parking ratios to go down.
And that's exactly why I was asking, because I know that we're looking at the parking requirements. Okay, great.
Just to address quickly the concern about the cannot be located adjacent to residentially zoned property, and that, of course, as is proposed, is only for the installation of five or more charging stations. If they were to have five or more charging stations, it would have to come to the board for consideration as another business item anyway. So just throwing it out here as an option that the board may consider to remove C, saying cannot be located adjacent to residentially zoned property, and that would give the board the opportunity through that OB process to evaluate on a case-by-case basis, looking at things like buffering, all those sorts of things, whether or not it may be appropriate for a specific site.
No, I really appreciate that insight, and I guess I do also want to know what exactly the concern was. Like, I can guess, but know where it came from, just so that I have that context too. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I can share what happened at the avenues of West Cobb, and I believe it also happened at the avenues of East Cobb, which is what started driving this code amendment change. So at the avenues of West Cobb, they essentially went ahead and installed these in the buffer area. Again, the buffer area on the site plan is defined and is not supposed to be disturbed. But by the time it was turned into code enforcement, code enforcement came out, it was too, it was too late. They also then put them, while they put them along a major highway, it is emanating light, which is causing issues to drivers at night. So that is partially why some of this language is in here, to address those concerns. It's not necessarily the fact that it's a new way of doing things. It's, again, being able to do the new things, but not being an intrusion to the neighbors. But if we're saying, where can these go? Technically, our code currently only says gas stations. We have no definition for a station or a facility that's just going to be electronic charging. So again, this, to me, is the first step in the code, because we are going to have to look at how we're going to address this in the future if we ever turn over into an electric.
Understandable.
And I know you have to go, I just, I want, because I know it was addressing part of what I had questioned.
Okay.
It was more of the adjacent, the residential adjacent component, just specifically that item. I think the other pieces make a lot of sense, but I do have that question, so.
So again, the adjacent residential is the light that they emanate that then pollutes over. And like Jessica was talking about, how we did the lighting on the gas stations, because the gas stations all of a sudden updated to these LEDs, yet the light was spilling out into the neighborhoods, across roads, or blinding drivers. And our code didn't have anything in it for code enforcement to go out and say, "You need to tip your light to keep it on your property." So I can understand why this was put on there, just to help, again, protect the quiet nature of the neighborhood. And again, if a gas station in the future is adjacent to a neighborhood, there's always a way to put it in, be at the front of the station, you know, so that way it's not adjacent to the neighbors.
Okay.
Sheffield and then Burrow. John, just a quick question with respect to the last bullet. What is the maximum voltage for the residential charging station? And do we need to somehow incorporate that in another part of the zoning code?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Sheffield. I'm aware that there's AC and DC type chargers. You know, the code doesn't address either one, you know, because the complaint we had was regarding the lighting, the signage, and the location.
Right.
It doesn't matter to me if it's AC or DC, or the number of volts.
Okay. But specifically for the residential property, because most charge in their garages, I was just curious about the maximum voltage for that.
Yeah, and there was no maximum voltage for residential single station.
Okay.
And that would tend to be covered under, for instance, the International Electric Code. That's when we get, that's not so much a zoning issue as much as a code issue from the electrical standpoint.
Okay. All right, and regarding the lighting, and, you know, I'm not going to belabor this, but it seems like, I mean, they're very well lit, and I understand why people stop at any point during the day, early evening, early morning hours to charge. But are you finding that the lighting is as intrusive as some of the lights now on the new gas station, like the one on Hicks Road that I'm dealing with at the Valero gas station? It's very bright. So is it this type of brightness or light that's being illuminated from the stations?
With these stations, they are very unique, because they're normally, stations are usually pretty tall, and they're lit all the way up to the top, and they do cause a lot of light spillage. But just like the normal gas stations, you know, we had one on Dallas Highway where it spilled light all the way across four lanes of traffic onto the property across Dallas Highway from it. So we're just trying to control lighting as much as possible, so it doesn't cause a burden to other properties.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
But again, this applies to five or more.
Correct.
So a gas station, a small gas station, could put three in and not have to worry?
That's correct. And, you know, we are seeing some newer gas stations come in that are including these charging stations, but it's not four or five, it's usually two. So at this point, it's not that, not that many.
And so when you say a maximum of one and permitted, permitted residentially zoned, does that apply in the garage?
It's normally in a garage, and currently they are allowed to have one.
Well, what if both cars are electric? You couldn't have a charging station for each one in your garage?
It's only for one at this point in time, Commissioner Burrow.
I know households that have multiple. I know.
You just can't charge the other one while the, you can have one charging, I mean...
And we can definitely, you know, revisit this code section down the road, or if the board wants to amend it to one charging station per electric car in a residential district, then we can look at that.
As long as they're in the garage, it's not going to matter, is it?
It shouldn't matter.
I mean, I haven't seen any outside a garage in a residential area. Where would you put one in your yard?
No, you know, there are charging stations, or most of the charging stations you see are outside. So we're just trying to anticipate that in the future there may be more than one. But, you know, normally they go inside the garage, and they may have their own separate meter. But currently, you know, we do allow them in the garage. We're just trying to clarify.
Well, you have to, if you don't have an electric car, you gotta be able to charge it in, at your home. Okay.
So John and Jessica, back to the consideration of the sites adjacent to residentially zoned property, are there any changes that would be made to consider this under other business per the discussion that we've had? Or are we able to keep this the same, still considering the possibility of this being located next to residentially zoned property?
And just to try to answer your question, because I kind of see what you're talking about now. You know, say you have one acre zone, CRC for a gas station, you know, it doesn't prohibit you from having your charging station, but we're trying to keep it away from the houses that may be to the rear of it or to the side of it. When you go to a gas station, the pumps are usually the closest thing to the road, and that's our vision, is to keep these away from the residential.
We have a provision like that in our SLUP that talks about the use being towards the center of the property as opposed to being towards the property line. So is there a way to incorporate that without putting in a restriction that could be more restrictive than a traditional gas station?
Yes, you know, we can revise the code to clarify that. It's not a prohibited use, it's just, it needs to be moved as far away from the residential property as you can. And as I mentioned earlier, the one new gas station I saw, the EV charging stations were up along the road. It wasn't in the back or to the side.
And there weren't five of them?
No, it was two.
Right there. I don't have to compare.
Yes, for that particular one. Okay. Our Commissioners, amenable to what John just shared about locating, putting in a clause to locate it away from the adjacent residential property?
Yes.
This one says it can't be adjacent. When I, I mean, I read this, and perhaps there's clarification, because Commissioner Graham will share, this is what this says. When I read adjacent to, I'm thinking that if the parcel is zoned commercial, it cannot be next to a residentially zoned residential property versus the actual station itself can't be approximately adjacent to the residential property.
Perhaps we can, and that, I see exactly where you're going with that, Chairwoman. I think perhaps we could clarify the language to make it clear that it shouldn't be visible from a residential property line, or something like that, or, you know, it's just like the, for the four and under, it says that it should be installed next to the same or more intense zoning category, to clarify that really we don't want it along the residential.
Yes, yes. Yes. Commissioner Richardson and then Sheffield, let's see your mic.
Yeah, I would say just to specifically call out that the charging stations half can't be in the line of sight, not just, because when I read this, I'm thinking of the parcel, because we're talking about parcels.
Yes, that's what I...
So just to stay consistent, that would help for me.
Commissioner Sheffield?
I guess the thing is, from the sounds of it, the greatest challenge is the light, not the charging station itself.
Correct.
So, you know, as we revise it, I don't know how beneficial, obviously, it will be a benefit to have the charging station away from the residential property, because that's where the light will be above the station. But I think the focus is more on the lighting itself. So, you know, you mentioned earlier that the lights are really up high, so I think that whether it's immediately adjacent to a residential parcel, or as far away as practically possible, the lighting will still present a challenge. So I think we really need to kind of focus on what can we do about the lighting. In some of the zoning applications we've had, and even with the gas station that you and I are working on, there is like some type of, I don't know, shield to protect the light from spilling over and kind of concentrate it to shine downward. So I don't know if this is that type of scenario where we need to really look into that, because it seems like the issue is more of the lighting.
And that's one of the things that we can look at, Commissioner Sheffield. You know, we could also look at, make sure that the can lights are recessed, you know, and the lenses are recessed, so they don't just...
To reduce the spillage.
...by light everywhere. And, you know, they, you know, we could, and we could also look at them using the lowest voltage light, or wattage light that they could use to make sure people can see where the charging stations are.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So there's this, go ahead, Burrow. Was your hand raised? Oh, go ahead.
I just want to make sure the charts, starting on page 90 to 96, was the request of East Cobb Civic Association, the cleanup. Is this what they were?
Yes.
So we're good?
Yep.
Thank you. Because we didn't get it in last time, and we promised it would be in this time, but it's just a cleanup. But, and I know Jessica explained it, but I just wanted to make sure it was the same request that came from ECCA.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, are we good with this section? Thank you, John and Jessica.
Thank you.
We can go to the next section.
All right, so the final chapter for amendment today is part two, chapter two, administration. So Brian Johnson with County Attorney's Office will be presenting that item.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and Board of Commissioners. This proposed amendment is pursuant to local legislation, which was passed and signed by the Governor a few years ago, and this regards enabling legislation governing the Cobb Marietta Coliseum Hall and exhibit authority. So this doesn't relate to any of your powers. And the changes apply to the definitions and to some bonding projects from, that the authority is allowed to do per the local legislation. We have to make these changes to come into compliance, and they're relatively minor. They're dealing with the definitions of what a project is, specifically allowing or authorizing projects to include properties, requiring them to be owned and leased by the authority, and then as they relate to debt and bonding projects for those projects. But again, these are pursuant to local legislation from a few years ago, and that's just to bring our enabling legislation into compliance.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our attorney? You're off the hot seat. Does that take us to the end of the code section? Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, that is, that is it for our code amendment presentation today. So just next steps from here, only chapter 134 suggests the zoning amendments will be heard by the Planning Commission. There'll be a public hearing on October 3rd, 9:00 at their regular October meeting. The first public hearing before the Board of Commissioners for the entire code amendment package will be on October 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the regular meeting. And then the second public hearing and the opportunity for the Board to adopt the amendments will be at 7:00 on October 24th. And of course, whenever the agenda packet for the second public hearing is published, at that point, you'll see all the revisions that have been made as a result of this conversation, as well as anything that comes out of the first public hearing. So that'll be cleaned up, and we'll republish the package for everyone's viewing.
Thank you. I just wanted to make an observation that last time when we had code amendments, the Board considered changes during the second public hearing, and there were requests from residents that we not approve it because they wouldn't have time to digest those changes. And I remember talking about this with you, Bill. I can't recall, though, did we change the date of adoption from that second hearing because of those concerns?
So, once the code amendments are advertised at that point, I believe, and Bill, you can correct me if I... So, once the code amendments are advertised, at that point, I believe, and Bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we have sixty days for the board to take action, either approve them or deny them, so.
And that would still give us the opportunity then to take action, even if there were changes proposed that night? Would they still have to have approval or denial, or could it be postponed for consideration after that?
I'd have to look at the dates, but typically, you don't. You're only, this is, this lined up pursuant to the code, so it's actually enacted on that.
I don't disagree, but I just keenly remember the request coming up and having a conversation, because residents thought that they didn't have time to react to the discussion of the board in changing the code. So I perceive that we actually held a matter, I just can't remember specifically.
There were some items that got held, for instance, there were some changes to the traffic study requirements, the traffic study requirements and the zoning ordinance. We had some changes that were proposed back in the early code amendments in 2022, back in like January. And the board, or the public reacted to that, and we're not comfortable with some of the changes and discussions that were made. So those did not get adopted at the second public hearing. It put us outside the sixty day window, so we had to bring those back for consideration in the fall, and we did.
We did, okay, did we repost, and we reposted them again, so the public was aware?
They went through the full process again in the fall when they were adopted.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do commissioners have any other questions for Jessica? Commissioner Granville.
Jessica, I know this wasn't in the code package, but we've had an email, and Commissioner Burrow, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, but about individuals mounting sixty inch electronic signs in the back of vehicles. I know John Peterson and I had a conversation about this earlier today. I know many years ago, when they would put signs in the back of vehicles and then park it along the street, we were able to address that through code enforcement. But for this, and Director Register, I don't know if you can answer this, but if, if somebody is driving down the road with a sixty inch electronic billboard in the back of their vehicle, we can't necessarily regulate that by code. Would that be regulated by state law as to roadways and advertising?
We'll let the director come up.
We, we didn't have time to get it in this code amendment package. That was another request from ECCA. But we are looking into it, and we'll be addressing it in, in next year in our code amendment.
I have it, I have it on a list as something for us to look at, because yes, you're correct, Commissioner Burrow. When we got that request from ECCA, at that point, the draft amendments had been packaged up. They were already in the County Attorney's Office for review, and something like that is something, there are, there are a lot of factors to consider, enforcement being key, also considering that these vehicles are typically crossing county lines, where Fulton County's rules may not be the same as ours. So this is something that does require some additional research and, and understanding with public safety. So it was not something where we could rush to get it in the amendment package this time, and I don't know.
You're exactly right, and thanks for that response. And it could be construed as a vendor, too, if they're doing it, you know, for profit, as a business, you know, with the billboard. So that's another thing that we would look at.
So then the, the bigger question is, is do we want to address this in our local enabling legislation? Or do we want to throw it to our lobbyist for the state to have them go to the state to look at enabling legislation? That would apply to all counties, because as Jessica said, you know, they could cross county lines, and while they would be, you know, we would have code. Would we want to do this legislatively instead of locally?
Preferably, because there would be potentially problems, being able to, even if we'd be able to enforce what's on the roadways at all, if it was uniform throughout the state, if they were able to enforce it at all, it would be preferable for it to happen. The actual, for local legislation to actually be able to address that, I doubt would be, would be very suspect, so.
So Jimmy, can I ask that to be put on our list? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jessica?
Would it be incorporated in our sign ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Could it be incorporated into our sign ordinance?
The sign ordinance really, the sign ordinance really pertains specifically to signs on private property, not, not private property like cars, but like parcels, land. So I think to the County Attorney's point, that that would be something that may be better to take a look at at the state level. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you so much, Jessica, for presenting this package.
All right, and thank you all for the time that you took to meet with, with me on these and provide feedback, so we appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, let's take a five minute break before we have our next presentation.
All right, welcome back to our Board of Commissioners work section. We are at our second presentation, which is to receive a presentation regarding a local emergency operations plan and damage assessment reporting tool. And I'm pleased that we're doing this during Emergency Preparedness Month.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's quite fitting.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, if you could introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, I'm Cassie Maslim, I'm the Emergency Management Director here in Cobb. Appreciate your time this, this afternoon. Our Cobb Emergency Management Agency provides countywide emergency management program leadership, continuity, and direction to enable Cobb County and its partners to prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate the impact of natural, manmade, or technological disasters upon its people or property. So that is our mission. We are a small group, we report to the Director of Public Safety. I have a small team of five people to cover a lot of ground. So we do rely heavily on volunteers, and I'll discuss that here in a little bit. It is National Preparedness Month, and the, the theme this year is Take Control One, Two, Three. And this encourages everyone, especially, especially older adults, to become more prepared in three simple steps. The first one is to assess your needs. And this is where you determine what factors you need to be safe in your home, whether you have kids, pets, or any disabilities that you may have. It's important to know what you need in your home to stay safe. Second, to make a plan. Once you've assessed your needs, it's important that you do make a plan and have an emergency supply kit readily available that will accommodate those needs that you have. And third, to engage your support network, which could be your neighbors. Neighbors can be a great tool to have during and after a disaster for support. The emergency management cycle is something that we live by. This is the ongoing process to plan for and reduce the impact of disasters. All areas of this cycle are addressed in our local emergency operations plan, which is what we're going to discuss today. The focus is on preparedness and recovery. For plans, we have a multitude of plans in, in emergency management. We are responsible for all emergency plans in the county. We have our COOP plan, our hazard mitigation plan, those, that along with the local emergency operations plan are our biggest three. We also have smaller plans that we continue to update yearly, which is our shelter plan, a severe weather plan, the stadium response guide for Truist Park, and a family reunification plan. The local emergency operations plan, what is that exactly? So the state requires every county to have an emergency operations plan. This plan is reviewed annually by the EMA, but it's also required to have a four year update, and that's something that you guys were actually able to approve last year. And that's something we wanted to kind of touch on last year, we weren't able to do so, so we wanted to do that now. Our emergency operations plan is how you respond to the emergency operations center, and we do that through emergency support functions. Each emergency support function has a primary and a support agency to assist in the operations. Here is a list of the emergency support functions, you can see there are fifteen. So for instance, our ESF one transportation, our primary agency is of course Cobb DOT. We partner with BOLD Planning in our, our planning efforts. This is some, we got introduced to BOLD Planning when we started our COOP plans, if you can remember, several years back. Since then, we've been able to partner with them and be able to place our LEOP and our hazard mitigation plan into this portal, which makes it a, a great tool, since it's the, these are the three primary plans we have in the county. You can assess these plans through this portal and make any changes that come into your agency. So for instance, if a department has changes in leadership, they can update the plan accordingly. The LEOP structure is, has a base plan that contains a purpose, scope, activation, demolition procedures, direction, and control. The emergency support functions that I mentioned, those are the groupings of how the government and private sectors or private sectors are going to be, your utility companies, for instance. And this is the organizational structure which talk about how they can support a disaster through resources, program implementation, and any services that they can provide to support a disaster response. The hazard event specific annexes that we have in the LEOP currently are the COVID-19 response plan. If you remember, we introduced that during COVID. And that plan basically tells how we're going to respond to COVID during each particular phase of the pandemic. That plan also lays out the, the stockpile that we have in place. And the plan also support, has supporting information, which is all the contacts. So each emergency support function has a primary and two secondary response personnel. So within that supporting information, you have those partnerships identified. And that includes also our private partners, and any facility information, or teams and responsibilities are laid out within that supporting information. So the roles and responsibilities for each ESF are defined in the LEOP, as I said, and they are, the people are identified within the LEOP that would respond to the EOC. Those also have a primary and two secondaries. The EOC has three activation levels. One is a full activation. A full activation occurred in two thousand nine during the flooding event. It also occurred during the initial response to COVID-19. A partial activation, we have more partial activations probably than anything currently. Severe weather happens, and, you know, a lot of times you can pick whether it's our police fire, now with public safety personnel that come into the center, along with DOT, or whoever is going to respond to a particular incident. The level two is typically what we have going on most frequently. And then, of course, monitoring where our EMA staff is keeping watch on any kind of situation that's about to occur, particularly severe weather usually. So we have developed a damage reporting tool. So as you know, severe weather occurs sometimes without notice, sometimes we get briefings and we have a heads up on what's going to happen. When we have a heads up, it gives us a little more time to prepare, and we know what areas we can expect that could possibly have damage. In the past, we've had, for instance, the 2021 floods, we didn't see that happening. And the people started reporting damage to us days later. So we actually came up with this tool in response to that. We started getting emails and phone calls over the weekend in 2021, and we knew we had a problem, and we had to do something to address it. So we put this tool together to help us identify who else had damage beyond what we had seen. In that particular event, we had three hundred homes reported damaged. So when we have damage reported, we have a damage assessment team. We have twenty-two members on this team that are well trained. They have met the individual assistance and public assistance training criteria. They have been deployed in 2020 during, they weren't deployed during 2020 with ZETA, because if you remember, all the roadways were, were, were not clear, and we had, weren't able to get people out into the community. So we weren't able to deploy them then, but we did deploy them shortly after we got word that the 2021 September flooding was something that needed more attention. They actually went out twice on that incident. And then they went out this past year for the EF1 tornado that affected South Cobb. I wanted to draw attention to this house, this is off William Road. This was during the 2023 January tornado. That event had about fifty homes that were damaged. Four were completely destroyed, this is one of the ones that were completely destroyed. We're very fortunate during that incident, because all of the residents had homeowner's insurance except for this one. This was a rental property, the, they had let the policy lapse, they did not have coverage, there were six children. It was, you know, heartbreaking incident. Unfortunately, during this incident, also, the red. Unfortunately, during this incident also, the Red Cross was on what was called a ground stop. So they did not go out into the community. Anytime we have severe weather incidents, we are typically in the 911 center monitoring the calls if we're, if it's during some kind of business hour or where we can be there. Otherwise, we get our information from our fire department that homes have been affected, and that's when we know we need to start gearing up. This particular instance, we knew that Red Cross was not going to be able to come out. I had worked with our must-ministries partners to secure some kind of hotel voucher in case it was needed. Fortunately, it wasn't needed that night, and we didn't have anybody displaced without somewhere to go. All of those residents were able to either find a place or get a hotel through their insurance provider. This was also during the 2023 tornado event. This was off Panda Court. I draw attention to this picture because that's, it's a bedroom on the second floor where a little girl was asleep. She heard the tree snap, jumped up, ran into a hallway, or she would have been possibly killed in this incident. I actually dealt with this homeowner quite frequently after the event as well. Her insurance did pay for the damages, but for some reason, there was an issue with how they had paid for the first floor. They didn't want to, didn't want to cover part of it, or there was different things she was going through with her insurance provider back and forth. And I say all that to say that, you know, the response and the recovery effort to these incidents go well beyond what you would think. We have constant communication with some of these people, and the only thing we can ever do is really depend on our nonprofits for assistance. And we are blessed to have great relationships with them, and I've never been turned down to have help in response to them. So how we deal with educating our public? We have our Community Emergency Response Team. This is a 24-hour course that's available to anyone in the county. We currently have trained more than 3,000 people. We have 800 active on the team currently. On that, of those 800, we have so many that are designated on these various teams here. Search and Rescue, Damage Assessment, Shelter Support, EMA Disaster Admin Team, and the Auxiliary Communications Team. So in order to become one of the member on these teams, you have to take that initial training. That training offers a disaster assistance, a disaster preparedness skills that will help the community when first responders can't get to you right away. And that's something that, you know, I don't think people realize. If damage is widespread, it could be a minute before the police or fire can get to you. So knowing how to respond to a situation ahead of time is key. And this program helps our residents learn about those skills and have that technique available to them so that they don't find themselves in a situation they're not prepared for. We have two more training classes available to the public, October and November coming up. And you can also do this course now online, which has just become available. If people choose to do the course online, they can come in. We'll schedule a time for them to come in and do the in-person, the parts that need to be done in person can be scheduled at a later time. So we're hoping to see a great increase in people that take the class now that it is available online. Just like anything, COVID-19 deterred a lot of the participation in some of our, on this program. So we're seeing our numbers start to pick back up from where it originally was before COVID, when we had a great success with our in-person training before. A new program for us is our Crisis Coordinators. These are people that we are training within our Cobb County Government. So this is our employees, personnel are identified at each facility in the county that will receive training. And I'll show you the training here. It's a very dedicated curriculum to safety. So you have Until Help Arrives, Stop the Bleed, Civilian Response to Active Shooter, Fire Floor Warden, Severe Weather Planning and Preparedness, Workplace Safety and Security, and Discussion-Based Exercise. I want to highlight the Stop the Bleed. We have purchased the kits that go into the facilities for about seven of the first facilities that we've started. We have started with our senior services, senior services departments. So we have been working at Tim Lee, and I believe it's North Cobb, is it North Cobb? North Cobb, so far. And we're able to put these kits into the facilities once they've received that training. I think it's important for us to have those kits in there. If we're going to give them the opportunity to provide these skills, any of the equipment that's necessary to do so. So in order to provide this, it's about $700 a kit. I was able to do that with our Emergency Management Performance Grant funding that we have in our office. I'm hoping to use some ARPA funding that I have for stockpile to continue this going forward. I'll be working on that in the coming days. So we're really excited about this. This is something that Dr. Matt Morris was very instrumental in, wanting our employees to be better trained and provide a safer opportunity for not only our personnel, but for the citizens that we serve. You know, so that they're better prepared to face any crisis that comes about, whether it's a fire, an active shooter, you don't know what could happen in a facility. So it'll take some time to get these people identified and trained in all the different facilities within the county, but we look forward to getting that accomplished. We have social media now, so we can put out information that comes available, especially within the weather and our reporting tool as it is needed in the community. We've been, so far, we've been able to push that tool out with our Cobb County Government Facebook pages and social media outlets, and it's been successful. Any questions?
Excellent. That was a great overview. This is the first overview I've seen of this since I've been here, and I was not aware of a lot of the programs and initiatives you have.
Yeah.
So I really appreciate you doing this and hope this is something we can incorporate periodically in our work sessions so that we keep abreast, because emergencies happen every year. We just never know which one it's going to be.
Never know, exactly.
They happen. Okay, with that, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Cassie? Yes.
Yes. So there's, there is a program that I'm interested in, and maybe this merits a post-conversation, but in utilizing beacon technology where we have all these volunteers that have different training aptitudes.
Mm-hmm.
And perhaps when there's an emergency, that someone could get a notification on their phone that there's an emergency nearby them to actually tend and coordination, like stop, you know, stopping if someone has an injury and they can stop their bleeding before emergency staff arrives.
Right, before fire or police personnel arrive.
Yeah, yeah. Is that something that has been looked at, or?
I have not seen that, so if you could send it to me, I'll definitely look into it.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yeah, just as a quick question, but first, just thank you for your response regarding the tornado damage last year over in Austell. But in the plan, I wanted to confirm the $500 that the BOC approved, if that funding was somehow incorporated into a plan that you shared with us today for housing disasters.
So you're talking about the $500,000 for emergency sheltering? We are currently working with legal to identify what processes are going to be in place and the procedures in place to incorporate those dollars.
Okay.
But as of now, I don't have that.
Okay.
But it is coming.
All right, if you can just keep me posted.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Cassie.
Thank you, Cassie. Very good presentation, and it's good to know that a plan's in place. There was mention of a group that would go out to help that couldn't get out, like if the roads were blocked or whatever. And I'm not sure what that was called, but it was not CERT.
No, that's our Damage Assessment Team. But they are, they originally are part of CERT, and then after they go through that program, they get additional training to join these different teams.
Oh, okay.
So whether it's search and rescue, there's a whole training curriculum for each individual team. But in order to become a team member, they have to go through that initial CERT training.
Okay. But they are basically volunteers, community volunteers?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a great program.
Yeah, it's a great program. And like I said, if we're a small agency without the volunteer support, we wouldn't be able to accomplish everything. I mean, you don't realize that if there is widespread tornado damage and we get it, even if we get a declaration or we don't, there are going to be disaster recovery centers that need to be opened. They have to be manned. The EOC has to continue to run. And it's going to take more than the six of us to do that work. So we rely heavily on volunteers. And as you can see, I've mentioned a shelter support team. That's something, you know, the Red Cross is a fantastic asset. But as I said, during the 2023 tornado, they weren't available to go out. So you have to be able to think, what are we going to do instead of that? And that was something that was considered when you guys approved the $500,000 for emergency sheltering, you know? And that's something we've got to identify how we're going to make that funding work in our advantage. That being said, trying to determine what's best is never easy, you know? We try to think of the worst-case scenario and find a solution. So for instance, they shelter volunteers. If Red Cross doesn't have the manpower that's needed to run a shelter, if we have to open one here in Cobb, then we have manpower of our own that we know we can rely on that's received the shelter training that can handle that workload that's, you know, that's necessary.
Any other questions?
With that being said, I think we have opportunity to honor those who are part of our CERT program and their willingness to step up when there's an emergency, which again, often is not planned. That's why it's an emergency. And I'm sure this has significant impact on their day-to-day activity. So I just want to first commend anyone who's a part of that program and perhaps see if there's a way that we can recognize them. Another recognition I'm hoping we can put in place, if it's not there, is just recognizing where we have them. Do you have a map or some way of determining how proximate they are to different parts of the county so we can?
We have addresses for all of them, and that's something we've talked about, is putting them on a map. And then you think about making that a public thing if there's any question on them knowing. So that was the only holdup of that.
Not necessarily public, but for each individual. But I also had another question kind of getting to that. If there was an emergency, do we have a designated facility? If persons knew they can go to this area close by? Is there a presumption that they might go to a church, to a rec center, to a government center?
To congregate as a team? No, that hasn't been done, but that's a great idea.
Yeah, because then I thought to you, like if, I don't know if the CERT volunteers are like in a zone, but perhaps if people, I guess from listening to you, people are going to call 911?
Right.
Or there's another, you might get your, 911 from the fire department might be, you know, a source. So I was thinking if there was a contact person, but I also hate putting that on an individual citizen. I think you have two robust sources of dispatch.
Right. And a lot of times when they do congregate, they just know to come to the Emergency Operations Center for additional direction on what they're going to be tasked with.
Yeah, that makes sense. Crisis coordinator. Who's our crisis coordinator for Building A?
We haven't got there yet.
Okay.
So y'all be thinking.
Okay.
I think that's going to be a great program. I'm excited about that one. I think it's long overdue. It comes off the concept of floor wardens, and we've had that before in the county. But just to give them even more training than just a fire prevention or fire safety training, giving them the active shooter, the stop the bleed, things that could, that happen across our country every day, giving them the skill set to be that person that can take charge and identifying those people ahead of time is super cute.
Yes, okay.
I nominate Jimmy.
It has to be somebody full-time that's here.
That's true. It does. It does.
He is here all day.
We're too busy.
Okay, okay. Excellent program. Thank you so much, Cassie, for sharing this with us. Your team does a great work with what you revealed, just six employees. Thank you for what you do in covering Cobb County. And for our public, if you did not know, this is our state award-winning emergency management director who's been recognized for her leadership and service. So we're so grateful to have you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
With that, that includes our work session for this afternoon. If you are interested, come join us. At 7:00 PM, we have our Cobb County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Thank you, and our meeting is now adjourned.